All right, I'll now call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM on October 21st, 2021. Councilman Art, would you like to lead us in the flag slip?
The religious unified the United States of America into a republic of which stands one nation, under God, invisible liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilman Art?
Here.
Councilwoman Lukeye?
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Here.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Here.
Mayor Bryan?
President. All right, I have a very special announcement tonight for item three, special presentations and announcements. We have with us our new interim city manager, Jefferson Spencer. Deeply appreciate deeply appreciative of his ability to come help us in such short notice. And from November 1st onward, he's going to be the key leader of the city hall there. So I expect to find him either through email, phone, or in person at city hall. I don't know if you want to say a few words at the podium or?
To keep it quick because of the public hearing. We've got public hearing. I'll just say thank you to each one of the council members for bringing me in here. And thanks to Todd for making this a great transition for Dunsborough and for the citizens. And I've been really impressed with the staff so far. They've been great to work with. Wendy, Blake, Tanya, Manya, Mark, Brian, all of them. Fantastic. So thanks. And I'll say more in November. How's that?
Okay.
Good for you. Welcome to the party.
If I could, just a moment, you gave a great little synopsis of your background during the community care team meeting. Could you just go over that, please, just to let people know why you're going to be?
Well, actually, you don't mind, Councilman Deutsch? We did go over it at the last meeting briefly, and I think in the interest of time, I'll suffice for now. We'll have a lot of time to get to know Mr. Spencer in the coming weeks and months. So let's move forward into general public comment. So this is the time for you to comment on anything that is not on the agenda, so anything generally that you want to bring up. You can also comment on the consent agenda, which has the COPS budget amendment, an increase of our COPS grant. A long time ago, when they were shuffling taxes around, they took away part of our taxes and gave it to the county. In exchange, we get a reimbursement towards our public safety. This was like in the early 90s. It's somewhat complex, but the algorithm spits out the amount that we're able to get based on our population, et cetera, and the amount that comes in. We get an increase, thankfully, of 36,000 or so. That's on the consent and our check registry for the last two weeks. So I do see a lot of people here, and I'm glad it's well attended. If you are here for either the planning fee study or the water or sewer rate changes, the time to comment on those will be later. So this is just a general public comment. Please come to the podium, state your name, your address for the record, and you'll be allowed three minutes. We just ask that you fit it into the three minutes there so that everyone has a chance to speak tonight.
Hey, everybody. I'm Alison Lyshevsky, 5334 River Avenue. Nice to see everybody tonight. I'm here to talk about, give an update of the Talendali Park Grant Project through the McConnell Grant. We're doing it. You know, I like to think of the whole Nike Just Do It quote, you know, but then I sort of make it a we're doing it because we are. I hope folks got a chance to get down there. We got new bear-proof trash cans that are installed at Talendali Park, two of them. We have tables and benches that are placed on the platforms. That happened last week. Next spring, we are going to be putting some public art on the sewage pump station. We partnered with a local mural artist, Kim Solga. So she'll be painting in the spring some wild flowers that are native to Talendali Park. She's working alongside Ernie at the Siskiyou Arts Museum, who knows quite a bit about flowers. And coming up, which is, which is a pretty big part of the project, is the installation of the interpretive panels. So we have 23 interpretive panels being installed in the park. If you've been down there lately, you'll see a bunch of holes in the ground. That's where the panels are going to go. There's going to be a map in the main section, and it's looking great. I've been working with Angel Gomez on this project, and it's, it's, it's just been a collaborative effort. I also want to thank, give a special thanks to Brian Wilson and Todd Uhas and Wendy Perkins and my neighbor Ken Wood for his volunteerism. This, this has just been a blessing of a project to lead. And we got some weather here, but on the ground, hopefully this Wednesday by FedEx should be these interpretive panels. And I have a tentatively scheduled workday of Friday, the 29th, and then the subsequent three Fridays in November after that. Off the top of my head, I want to say the 5th, the 12th, and the 19th of November. These are all working Fridays where I could really use some support. What kind of support? Pretty much putting a bunch of posts up and pouring concrete in them. We're going to be using a concrete mixer, and I'm gathering materials. And I want to also thank the Dunsborough Rotary for their participation in this. So if you'd like to reach out to me directly, I'm going to leave my phone number. Yeah.
30 seconds.
Okay, I'm going to leave my phone number for folks to reach out to me directly if you're available this Friday or any of the first three Fridays in November. Of course, this is weather pending. If it's raining, we're going to hold off on this. My phone number is area code 413-657-3021. Thank you so much. We're going to try to start maybe around 8:00 AM. It really depends on the temperature for the concrete to set. Yeah, thank you.
You're my hero.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
All right. Thank you so much. Any further general public comment this evening? If you're on Zoom, you can go to the reactions tab, the latest iteration, and hit the raise your hand button.
Nope, nobody here on Zoom.
So seeing no more general public comment, I'll now close the public comment for this evening and move on to council and staff comments. City manager?
So the majority of my time over, you know, the last time we met, it's been working with Jeff to get him up to speed. I'd like to add that, you know, just for information, in case anybody heard anything last night, I got a call from the FAA at about 11:00, and there is a Cessna that went down, and it looked like the last ping was near our airport. So they called me and wanted me to check to see if it made an emergency landing. It didn't. So it isn't in any of other, our other local airports between Dunsborough and Weed, somewhere where the, you know, there is where the ping is. So search and rescue crews are out right now. So.
Between 89 and Castella, more into the sheriff's.
If you guys, if you've heard anything, pass it along to the sheriff's office, please.
Yes.
Thanks.
And, and, and our thoughts and prayers are with the pilot, anybody on board?
No, no comments. We can keep moving. Thanks.
With the sheriff's department? We can come up here.
Do you have any stats or an update?
Just welcome. I don't think you've been to our meeting.
So I'm Deputy Chris Stock. I'm born and raised in Mount Shasta. I've been here pretty much all my life. I love Siskiyou County, and I got a chance to come back to work for the sheriff's department after doing about 12 years previously. I did 14 years at Mount Shasta Police Department. And your sheriff is doing a wonderful job, Jeremiah. I don't know if many of you have had a chance to sit down and talk with him. I had a talk with him last night, and the man's just incredible to talk to. He cares a lot about the community, about the county in general, and he's working his butt off. He's tired, but he's still going. So I am here to give you some stats for the month of September. You've got some guys working South County right now that are, that are hustlers, and they spend a lot of time in troubled areas, and they seem to get down here quite often. I mean, I'm turning, I'm turning in 40 and 50 hours a month, and other guys are doing 85 and, you know, 105. You know, they're doing a lot of time down here. So Dunsborough total hours are 375 for the month of September. Total calls are 205. The total cases were 25. Traffic stops were 11. Citations, nine. There were five misdemeanor arrests and no felonies. The arrests, one DUI drugs, two domestic violence, and three were drunken publics. So, you know, we just got emails today about some troubled areas in town, so we're going to be hitting those. We've got some patrol checks and some things that you guys want us to keep an eye on, off-hours, when you guys aren't around, when, I guess, Mark's not here. And so hopefully we can keep up on that for you guys. Any other questions? I don't have any information on the Cessna. I'm sorry. I know that we're out looking for it, and we were looking for it last night.
Thank you so much, Deputy Stock. We really appreciate you being here tonight. Welcome to our council meetings.
One question, as I'm writing, we normally write, and I didn't write, and I want to thank you, but you said zero felony arrests.
Zero felony arrests.
That's a good, that's a good thing.
Zero felony arrests.
Yeah.
So we're going into winter months. I hate to say it, but domestic violence and stuff seems to pick up. You're inside a lot with this COVID situation. We've been inside for a year and a half, so people should be pretty used to it by now. But, you know, all we can do is be diligent enough to have a quick response and hopefully keep a small roar.
Well, thank you so much, Deputy Stock. We really appreciate your proactive engagement with the community. Thank you for bringing us the report tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love the neighborhood.
Move on to staff comments. I just asked that, and I know I say this often, that we keep them brief, given the large agenda we have before us tonight. I would definitely bring up anything of great importance. Councilman Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to give an update on the challenge that Councilmember Art has been laying down here for quite a while. And Councilman Kaiser and I are working on putting together a Veterans Day Parade. I've been in contact with the sheriff's office and the coordinator with the veterans there. The, in terms of dates, I don't believe it's feasible for a couple of reasons to do it on the 11th, which is a Thursday. I don't think we'll get the attendance, and I don't, also, the, the honor guard that would be part of the ceremony would not be available because they've already booked. Aetna does it, has a significant parade on the Saturday before. What I'm proposing is that we do it in the afternoon on Sunday before. We used to do the Memorial Day ceremonies on Sundays, and the one problem we had, obviously, was we didn't consider the churches. So I want to make sure that whatever time we schedule will be after the church services are all over. But I'll be working on that, getting information out right now. So unless other people here right now don't believe a Sunday afternoon is good for this, raise your hand now, or I'll just move ahead with this. Dave?
I was kind of thinking, yeah, I was kind of thinking that why can't, most of the people do it, like you say, they got it the week before, but most of the people, like Mount Shasta, all the ceremonies is always the week after or close to.
Well, whichever we can work it out, we'll get a date out. You and I work it, okay? You and I work it?
Yeah, I just don't think Sunday's cool.
Okay.
Because of the churches. Either that or we start it in 1:00.
That's what I'm saying afterwards.
And then you've got all the guys hot in uniforms. It's, it.
We'll talk it, Dave.
Okay.
The second.
Thank you for, thank you. Thank you.
Yep, we'll work it. The second thing I'd like to bring up, and I know we're kind of sliding through this process without much ado here in the public, but I would like to honor the service of our city manager over the last two years. I know it's really rough for us to be losing another city manager, and we can all count up on the number of times we've gone through this already. But according to the information out there, city managers do tend to move every two years. Todd is, is a young man, relatively speaking, who is on his way to becoming a city manager in a much larger arena eventually. And so this time with you, with us here is respected for that process. And I can say that we've been blessed, the last two city managers, the Air Force pipeline was good to us. We'll be losing that at least for a while. But I am extremely proud of the work that Todd has done for us, and I wish him well and, and fair seas and following winds.
Thanks, Bruce. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Councilman Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, to keep it brief, simply want to salute the magnificent women of Dunsborough. We finally got it done. We planted a Colorado blue spruce at the base of Cedar Street. Shereen Strauss did a beautiful job with the article in the newspaper. The council members were there. Many members of the family were there. As Big Dave knows, it got down to the last few hours where Jimmy Limo was out there with a pic saying, "We can't even dig a hole for this tree." And somehow, the hole was dug and good soil was imported. And as I walked up this evening, the tree looked very, very happy with its little lights and its dedication plaque to Patty Hill, who, as I said in the paper, was one of the most selfless women I know in this community. And that leads me to the dedication of a bench in the Dunsborough Community Garden across the street on Saturday, rain or shine, to honor the magnificent service of Ann Powers.
That's been moved, that's been moved because of the rain.
Well, we're meeting tomorrow morning, so I don't have any updates. But if it's been moved, so be it. There's a black marble bench inscribed in her honor, and it's going to be a lovely addition right next to the waterfall in the community garden. So I'm happy to go whether it's raining or not. I don't care. And of course, finally, thank you for the Veterans Day Parade. I did talk to Steve Bryant at the Community Resource Center, and part of what we're trying to do in the next 12 months is dramatically expand our program to help vets. And there are a number of vets that are mostly Vietnam-era, some Gulf Storm, but the more we can involve them in this community event and show it's not just a parade, but outreach to make their lives better, this is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Councilman Kaiser?
A lot of people don't know, I haven't been on Facebook for like the last two weeks. I had an operation a week ago, so I'm not up to par. So I'm sorry if I haven't been jumping on the bandwagons on a few of these issues, but I've been supportive, and I've been there by the phones for my counselors. We've had numerous phone calls and conversations over a few topics that we'll be discussing earlier tonight. I do want to thank Bruce. Just something about you, do you have a way of educating the people that being the teacher that's in you? I want to thank you for that, for myself. You've educated me, as well as most of the people in Dunsborough. And I want to thank everybody that's been supportive of me while I've been going through this. And that's part of what makes me be honored to live in Dunsborough. It's like I always said, if you don't see smoke coming out of Miss Smith's chimney, people stop and ask, "Miss Smith, is she okay?" I got a lot of people knocking on my door and asking if I'm all right. So I appreciate that. I haven't heard, but I hope that we took advantage of the free waste data we had. I don't know how it went, but I hope a lot of people took advantage of that. It was free. And then the Patty Hill thing. Steve, thank you. You rock. Couldn't have done it without you. I was honored to be part of it. And I want to thank council for, for coming up. And I understand that there were a couple of extra trees purchased by a fellow councilwoman, who, we remain anonymous. But it was a good thing. I was, I was glad to see the family, and I know the family appreciated it, from the little ones to the old ones. And that was pretty cool. So I got nothing else other than, other than, when we get in this tonight, I would ask everybody, just please, could we be cordial and respectful?
Thank you so much, Councilman Kaiser.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Lukeye?
I'm ready for tonight.
All right. I don't have any specific items. There is a lot to discuss tonight, so I think we should proceed to the committee reports.
So I have to apologize. I am the chair of both the Solid Waste and Finance, and we scheduled them for the exact same time on Monday. And then we had some technical difficulties, and so those both have been rescheduled.
Till when? Do we know?
I believe Solid Waste is for next Monday. We're going to meet next Monday at 5:00, and then Finance would meet the first Monday in November, our regular time. I will not be there. So you have to be there, Dave. You have to check that.
Okay, first Monday.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other committees met during this time? Seeing none. Let's move forward into approval of the minutes for our October 7th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of October 7th, 2021.
Oh, second.
A motion of second. Any discussion of the motion at hand? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Against. Motion carries unanimously. Let's move into the consent agenda for this evening. We get item A, check registry from October 2nd through October 15th, and the COPS budget amendment, the increase I spoke of earlier.
Move it.
Second.
Public comment?
We'll do that.
No, we don't do public for consent.
Not for consent.
Okay.
Goes on the general public.
I make a motion that we adopt the consent.
Motion by Art, second by the Casey. Sorry.
Oh, I got beaten.
Yeah, they got you. It's time. It's okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carries unanimously. So then tonight, we're going to move into our public hearing section. We do have two very important public hearings, our planning fee and our Prop 218 water sewer rate change. We're going to begin with the planning fee change. So we'll hear a summary from our planner, Rico Tinsman, who's online there on Zoom.
All right. Everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Fantastic. Okay. So thank you. The project is a proposed update of the city's planning fees to incorporate the results of the 2021 fee study. Just to clarify, the project does not include updating sewer and water rates. That is a separate item on tonight's agenda. That said, I'm going to try to keep this brief tonight because of the other item on tonight's agenda, which I assume most people are there for. More specifically, this project consists of a planning fee study, a resolution updating the city's planning fee schedule consistent with the recommendations of the fee study, and a draft ordinance establishing and updating planning fees by resolution, eliminating unnecessary publication requirements, establishing that planning fees become effective 60 days after adoption, consistent with state law, and incorporating language regarding accessory dwelling unit utility connections. The fee study was funded by SB 2 Planning Grant awarded the city last year. Funding for the fee study was requested because the city last updated its planning fees 14 years ago, with some of the fees established 48 years ago. Per the fee study, this has resulted in cost recovery under existing deposits that averages less than 48%. What this means is that the general fund may be subsidizing private development projects at the expense of projects that directly benefit the community. As proposed, the updated fees would allow the city to recover approximately 99% of its costs on average. In those few instances where current fees allowed for more than 100% cost recovery, this is really limited to temporary sign permits and fence permits, the fee study recommended that those fees be reduced. Also, please note that per draft resolution 2021-27, any fees not modified would remain in effect. Regarding SEQA, staff is recommending that the project is exempt pursuant to SEQA guideline in sections 15061B3, 15273A1, and 15378B4. This is because, one, the project does not have the potential to cause a significant effect on the environment; two, the project entails the establishment modification of user fees to meet operating expenses; and three, the project entails the creation of a government funding mechanism with no commitment to a specific project that has a potential to impact the environment. Accordingly, findings in support of the SEQA determination are included in the draft ordinance and resolution prepared for the city council's consideration. SACF is further recommending that the city council accept the 2021 fee study and that it adopt both ordinance 572 and resolution 21, sorry, 2021-27. Further, the suggested motion is in fact is provided for the council's consideration on page 5 of the staff report, which is page 16 of tonight's agenda packet. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions prior to the council opening the item up for public comment. Thank you.
Yes. Rico, I'm just kind of going back to what happened the last meeting. We mentioned SEQA. Shouldn't that be part of our motion going forward? Shouldn't that be a standard statement that we realize this does not go with SEQA or SEQA does not apply in the suggested motion you have on page?
Yeah, and I apologize that it's not in this, if I missed that again, I'm very sorry, and I will make sure that does not happen again. But by making the, yes, I think that's appropriate to do that, Councilwoman Deutsch, the, at the same time, again, you know, the findings for the SEQA determination are included in both the resolution and the draft ordinance.
Well, I'm just thinking going forward, if we have a standard, I think it should include that. I think it'd just be useful, wouldn't it?
Right.
I would agree, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, city planner. It's a very substantial report, and the fee, I can tell a lot of work and study went into it. Councilman Art, clarifying question?
Clarifying, is cannabis a carve-out? I mean, for instance, if a cannabis entrepreneur needs a conditional use permit, I assume the conditional use permit schedule would apply. But for the other processing that that industry needs, is that addressed in this? Or I laboriously looked through all the pages and didn't see anything.
So the, correct. So this is for planning fees. The way the city has addressed the cannabis is not through its planning fees, but through the adoption of that fee. And I frankly focus on the services that, that I know that the city is involved in with planning. I'm, I'm, yeah.
I'd be able to clarify perhaps. So the way the cannabis is set up, there's a $1,500 fee for the cannabis processing, and then there's $6,000 deposit to cover expenses. The expenses that would be covered under that $6,000 potentially could be changed if they needed, you know, items within this list.
It's a new industry, so it's not subject to the 14-year lag. So I assume we're pretty close to compensatory.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, I believe we adopted that two years ago.
48-year lag for some stuff. All right. Any other clarifying questions? Seeing none. I'm going to open this up for public comment this evening. Same as before, please come to the podium, say your name and address for the record, or if you're on Zoom, hit the raise your hand button, and we'll, we'll get you up here. All right. Seeing no public comment. One last call?
Tell them how to raise your hand one more time, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah. If you go to the reactions, they changed it on Zoom since a couple meetings ago. Go to the reactions tab and hit the raise your hand reaction. If you're calling in, hit star nine. Still seeing none? I will now close public comment on this public hearing. We can open it up for discussion.
I welcome the review, especially after 48 years. I think we should do this every 48 years.
Yeah. Typically, it's best practice that on an annual basis, with the adoption of a city budget, you also reaffirm what the planning fees are, just to make sure you're keeping up with cost of living or any changes.
Yeah, I have a question on that regard. Would it be possible to build in, but we Yeah, I have a question on that regard. Would it be possible to build in, but we just do it with the budget, but build in a sort of cost of living increase for, because we know what our employment rates go up.
Yeah, it depends. You don't necessarily want to program a standard rate or a standard, you know, specific dollar amount, because you could get a new individual in that position who's negotiated a different rate. So it's just, it's usually typically best practice to just adopt it every year with, you know, that note mentioned, like this has increased, this has not. Because one of the other things that's nice about doing this in a resolution format is that if one of these things, kind of similar to what Councilmember Art was getting at, if one of these, you know, if someone goes for a sign permit and we find that it's taking significantly more time or less time, we may have a bigger or less change in that fee.
Keep it flexible.
But to review it on an annual basis is recommended and typical for most cities. Rico, I really appreciate the study. It was really well done. I really don't have any questions on it. I've done one for Mount Chasta. And, you know, looking at the fee list, it looks like a lot of money for the city of Dunsmere. But in terms of planning application fees, this is pretty standard and very fair. Again, it is applied to people who are applying for those particular permits. And so having that cost upfront is important. So I don't have any issues with the proposed planning fees.
See no further discussion. Can we move into a, someone want to make a motion?
What is it that you're?
I've got, I've got it right here if you want.
All right, go for it.
I'm not going to do the SEQA, but I move that we accept the 2021 planning fee study for the city of Dunsmere, that we introduce and read ordinance 572 by title only, and that we adopt resolution 202127 to update the fee schedule as recommended. I further move that we direct staff to bring ordinance 572 back for adoption at the next opportunity.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion at hand?
Mr. Mayor, do we need to add the SEQA exemption? We find that this is exempt from SEQA?
So, no. I mean, it's, I think for Councilmember Deutsch's point is that we should have one specific way of doing it. But Rico did include language in both the ordinance and resolution to cover it.
So I'm fine with it right now?
Yeah. So either way, it's.
I'm fine with it right now.
All right.
It does seem as if this has very little to do with anything remotely connected with.
No, but you do have to.
I know.
Yeah. You do. It's a state regulation, regardless of what you do. You have to environmentally review it in California.
Yep. All right. Seeing no further, Councilman Art.
Well, I just, Rico, it appears the one place the city is slightly over collecting is processing of fence permits. And if I remember that page, most of our sister cities charge little or nothing for fence permits. And it looks like in appendix B, we're still charging $70?
Yeah. Well, I never like telling someone they shouldn't be charging money for something that they're doing. But we could actually have a discussion at another time, Councilmember Art, about fence permits and my thoughts on them.
Rico, did we change the eight-foot, six-foot part there?
Within the code update, which is separate from this item, yes, the height of the fences is being addressed.
Thank you, city planner, but we really shouldn't address future ordinance changes.
Typically, other cities, Councilmember Art, charge for fence permits through their building permit application process. And so sometimes it may not be its own separate call out item.
So you have a motion and a second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
Call the question, if you're okay.
All right. Let's move into a roll call vote.
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
Councilwoman Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Mayor Brian?
Aye.
Thank you, Rico.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Good night. And I wish you the best of luck with your discussions tonight.
Thank you so much.
You're not shaking around?
All right. Let's move into our public hearing, item B. This is a very important event for Dunsmere, happens only every so often. But we have Proposition 218 water sewer rate change. So the whole process and the way this works is we had an expired water study, and we had a sewer study that had some inaccuries in it, inaccuracies in it that were leading it to be chronically underfunded, getting close to a cash crunch. So PACE did a brand-new water study and came in and with the help of a finance director mostly, and the committee analyzed a new five-year plan for both water and sewer. Great pains were taken, and there's a lot of meetings prior to this, to lower the rate by which we must increase these funds. And the committee recommended the lowest possible path to keeping our funds solvent. And no one likes to raise rates, but we're now at the point where notice was given out and a town hall was held last week. It was hosted, thank you, Councilmember Deutsch, where we're going to have our ballots. So I'm not sure of the exact procedure for the ballots. I know some people submitted in advance, and you can submit now. But what we're going to do is get a brief summary. We're clarifying questions from council, and we're going to open it up pretty directly to public comment. Wendy, where would you like people who have a ballot that they'd like to cast?
You can bring it up to me.
Bring it up to that side. We'll be counting the negative votes. So if you're in favor of it, you don't need to vote. If you're not in favor of it, you can vote. So any clarifying questions from council at this point?
I think, could we just ask our city attorney just to briefly run through the procedure for tonight, just so everybody's clear, that they can also make a verbal public comment?
Of course.
Yeah.
Yes. The procedure here is pretty simple. It's that your notice that's sent out explains what is to be done. Each parcel in the city that can be served is entitled to one vote, and it can have, excuse me, one protest. It can come from a property owner or a customer who lives in the property, but only one protest per property. People tonight can comment on their views. If there's a majority protest, you can't act on, you can't do anything. If there's not a majority protest, you're free to do, you know, basically whatever you want that's consistent with the rate study. So, and people can submit a protest tonight. They have to obviously give the name and their parcel number. And if people want to withdraw protest after tonight, they can do so. And at the close of the hearing, you should count the ballots. And if there's not a majority protest, make a finding that there is no majority protest, and then proceed with whatever the council wishes to do.
So just to clarify, so people will have to bring the protest form that was sent out to the rate payers. Coming up and giving a negative public comment does not count as a protest?
That's correct. It needs to be in writing, giving the name and the assessor's parcel number.
And I'm, am I correct in understanding that because we have both a water and a sewer study and rate increase proposed based on those studies, that we're going to be handling them separately?
Each one has to be handled separately, yes.
So a negative vote on one doesn't mean a negative vote on another.
That's correct.
Need a ballot per one.
Mr. Kenny?
Yes.
There's, there's a question. Let's hypothetically, I own five parcels, but I got, I'm paying water on two of them. The other ones don't have no water or sewer. I have five parcels. So how many votes do I get?
First of all, you have, there's five, what you're telling me is you have five parcels that are eligible for service. So you have the potential for five votes.
Even though there's only sewer and water on two?
Well, yes, but, well, assuming, yes, if those, those lots are capable of receiving service, then they're capable of voting.
So they have to be capable. Okay.
Yes.
They have to be inside city limits.
And not on a hillside, not a sliver.
No, it has to be in the city limits for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
That's why it's important to list the APNs that are associated, so.
Yes.
It was asked, and I had to re-ask it for this gentleman to make him happy, so I did.
Well, and anyone here tonight that has deep opinions about these rates, do stay involved, because there were at least five public meetings prior to now where public input was asked for and received by people. So there is a way to be involved with this unfolding if it seems like we're moving suddenly. That's because this is the end of a very long process.
Mr. Mayor?
With many public meetings, yes.
What's the number we need for these?
I need to know that from staff. They were tabulating the number of parcels we have. But more to the point, I think it's time to open it up to public comment.
Sure.
If anyone in the room wants to deliver a ballot?
Just for clarification, we should be really clear about which public hearing we're starting with. I believe we have sewer first is what's recommended. Okay. Just so that everybody's clear.
We're going to start with sewer and then move on to water. So right now, anyone who'd like to come up, same as before, please try to keep it to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. In your ballot, of course, put the parcel number, because that will be important to making your ballot eligible. So anyone who'd like to come up to comment on the rate study and proposed rate increase of the sewer fund?
I'm Roger L. Titus, residence 4233 Dunsmere Avenue, Dunsmere 96025, parcel number 059211-100-000. And all of you have a copy of what about the sewer. My comments about the sewer is that the city of Dunsmere gave PACE information that wasn't correct or factual for the number of sewer hookups. They gave them wrong information. PACE does not assume. They go on numbers. You folks put in this document, and it's, got it highlighted here, assumed, okay? You folks, city, gave PACE the information. PACE went with the information. You folks, the city of Dunsmere gave them. And apparently, it was incorrect. The, what I am suggesting that, number one, the city council put this on hold, get factual information, as I stated here, to PACE, audited by CPA before you give it to PACE, to make sure that your information's correct, so they can come up with the correct sewer analysis. So I'm suggesting that, number one, that the city council postpone the sewer program you have here. And number two, if you don't postpone it, my vote is no on the sewer for reasons I've stated here, that the city of Dunsmere gave PACE the information. PACE only went on the information that you, the city, gave them. Do your computers not work? Do you have employees not doing the right thing? I don't know. I don't hang out there. All I know is what I, what I read here.
Thirty seconds.
In the highlighted section. So my vote is no until you get a redone, revised workout from PACE with the correct sewer information.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Titus. Any additional public comment on the sewer? Yes, please, come to the podium. And on Zoom, if you'd like to make it afterwards, hit the raise your hand button and we'll put you in the queue.
Hi, my name is Debbie Spagnolo. First of all, I never got a ballot. Second of all,
What's your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 4120 Edith Street. I've been there for 30-something years. I was here when they first installed the first sewer lateral. It cost me $1,500. What I don't understand about the sewer fund thing is that it says right here in black and white, revenue receipts over the first two years of plan fell short. The anomalies involved the city practice of assigning duplicate accounts and or several fractional accounts for the same address. While the information was provided to our consult, to our consultant outlining the number of actual sewers, the consulting firm assumed that all single-family residents, residential accounts were represented on one address. This led to a serious undercounting of the sewer accounts needed to cover the cost of living. You guys don't even know how many sewer accounts are? Come on. When I read that, I was, I was appalled. I was really appalled. How in the world can you even print that, that you don't even know how many sewer people own? And then you want to raise it 7%? For what? I've been to almost every meeting, and I didn't go, I didn't know about the town hall meeting. I didn't know about the other meetings, because I would have been there. Because in 2010, I was at every one of them. And there were so much, so many wrong things then. And you said tonight that they're going to count the votes afterwards. Who's going to count them? 2010, they had a third-party company come and count them, because the first time they did it in 2010, they did it wrong. So I definitely vote no on the sewer. And we're already spending how much money? You guys don't even know how many toilets are being flushed. And I would definitely ask PACE Engineering, next time they install a pipe, are they going to install one this size, this size? And what material is it going to be made out of? So the roots don't go in there. When you go to a baker, you want a cake. You don't want a pumpkin. When you go to a tailor, you want your tailor done. You go to PACE Engineering, you sure aren't getting what you're getting paid for. I would have never hired them the second time. How dare them sit there and say, my house was built in 1938, and not once, not once have I had a plumbing problem. Wow, does that tell you something? The plumbers back then knew their stuff. I might have had a faucet or toilet or whatever.
Thirty seconds.
However, the point being is that you guys don't even know how many sewers there are to charge. And you're, and you're charging how much? 50 bucks a month, whatever it is? That's insane. And then you want to raise it 7%? Why don't you guys, out of all your pockets, pay that 7% for all of us? I vote no on the sewer. And I never got a ballot either, or any of the other things you talked about.
We didn't send out an ballot.
Well, then how come you're asking these people to turn in their ballots? What ballots?
Please, it's not a back and forth.
I'm asking a question. She said they didn't send out ballots, but yet you're asking people to turn in ballots. What ballots is she talking about?
There's a sample ballot on our website. Is it not?
There's instructions.
There's instructions.
There's instructions. You can submit any ballot you'd like on any piece of paper.
Yeah, the requirements of a ballot are that it have the APN. All right. Further public comment on the sewer rate increase?
Thank you. My name's Tony Baldwin. We own property at 6027 Butterfly Avenue and 6246 Sher Avenue. I hadn't intended to speak on this tonight in comment, but I've heard a couple of pretty serious questions asked, and I'll be looking into what the answers to those are. But I'll tell you what I see bigger than that is that your staff don't really seem to do a great job of getting these issues out in front of your folks. Town hall meetings aside, a website is not an optimal place for a lot of folks of varying ages to be able to go engage in this process. And I would encourage you, aside from these particular issues, to have staff review how they're engaging the stakeholders in these issues as they come up.
Thank you so much. Any further public comment?
I have a question for my lady.
Please, please come to the podium. So it's recorded. And if you could just give us your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Phil Hitchcock. I live at 6125 Sacramento Avenue. I have a neighbor that's, we share the back fence, and he owns two houses. He lives in Los Gatos. He was born and raised in McLeod and Dunsmere. He inherited a house, two houses on one lot from his parents when they died. And he was asking me, how come he's got one lot and gets two bills, even though both houses are on the same lot number? And I told him I'd ask. And I guess that's all. Sorry now.
All right. Thank you so much for the public comment. Is there any additional public comment on the sewer? comment on the sewer, sewer rate increase and sewer study? Do we have any from Zoom?
Nothing on Zoom.
All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this item, this portion of the item, the sewer portion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If it's okay with you, I'd like to clarify that point about the records, since that seems to be a point of contention.
No, I don't think we should do back and forth. But yeah, do you want to say a brief sentence on it?
Brief sentence. Back about three years ago, with the previous city manager and team, they passed along a file that contained the way that the previous city halls had worked. And that included, if you had special circumstances for a particular piece of property, they would end up with a second account. What the problem was, is when that file was given to PACE, the communication did not take place. There is no way in the world, we don't know how many accounts we have. No way in the world, every figure here, and I'll be glad to go over it with anybody, but the bottom line is, that problem was something that happened three years ago, and we have rectified it. And the bottom line is, if we had had it back in those days, you would have been paying a couple dollars extra a month. Actually, yeah, a couple dollars extra a month over the last couple of years. So it kind of works its way out. So I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Dutch. So let's move into the ballot counting for Do we go into a recess for the counting, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess for the counting. All right.
The little notice that they got had instructions on how to do a ballot. But yeah, you have to keep it pretty open. This is just a standard form, just in case that someone...
Yeah, no, I think it just needs to be taken before else.
So yes, I totally understand. See, that's good. The protocol is receive a ballot, come right, you know, right now, go. Here's my name.
Yeah.
I've been having a heat run about how fast it goes.
I started a fire a few days ago.
Really?
I don't...
I got a, we had to, we had to basically, our fireplace, we got inspected last year, and they're like, it's, it's like a ticking time bomb. The guy's like, I would never light up this thing ever again.
The problem you told me about council, I was able to, it takes a while.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't, we don't qualify because we have the income side.
No, there is no requirement. You tell us that.
We need to look at that. But yeah, we haven't, we haven't anything to do for a year.
We didn't qualify. If you have lower income, then...
Paying more.
You know, you're going to want to get all of the morning jackets.
Yeah.
Because it'd be like six hours ago, but they'll do a minimum of thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, because I've got to replace the chimney chute. I've got to replace the stove. I've got to...
Lady that says she didn't have a protest letter. I have two copies here. Can I give them to her? No, I do have a question. I don't know.
You just have to like five passes to let it actually work.
Maybe that's all new. Yeah, I've not...
Six, six months.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to do that. Yeah, we just, we just haven't been doing it. We moved our monitor to a different wall to make it more efficient. Because like, our monitor was right by our front door, and the exhaust was at the front door. So anytime we ran our monitor heater, you could smell the exhaust. So we officially moved that to a more appropriate place. But now we're, yeah, I'd love to have the fireplace working. It's just difficult.
I got it ready.
It's burning. It's a week old. And you can come up new because it smells. It's not
burnt off yet. And I was like, I need to check this exhaust.
I know. Like, three weeks ago, I just opened all the windows and started running our monitor. It always looks like the dust and stuff. I just, I can't stand that stuff.
Really?
Yeah.
Because the other alternative is the wind is so nice.
Yeah. I love this stuff.
This is the real game changer. It took me nine months, calling in and calling in and calling back, renting, installing. I'll never come down here, but finally I can come down. And it only took me $100 to install an entire house in an hour and fifty-nine.
Oh, yeah.
And that just changed everything.
Oh, yeah. No, my dad, we've got, yeah, no, we've been looking at doing that for our attic space. Because it's all like the old, like, super early stuff.
I'll give you his number.
Yeah. I've been, I've been debating how much I want to do myself, because I'm more than happy to put on a suit, go up there and like...
The thing is, because I can't do that to myself. It would cost me about $600, but I'd have to, it'd improve the gas, get it ready, get the steam, as long as the...
Really?
You get it all, you know, in the town hall. You get it all, you hope. So I figured for you, basically. And it ended up being almost a break even. It was like a hundred bucks more to happen to it. And I was like, well, he knows what he's doing a little better. It did look fun, though. One thing I have to do is I'll...
If you're going to be on walls, you've got to cut a hole, put your walls, you've got to fire a block, and you've got to do another hole.
I've got a couple of other stuff I have to do, but I did, I did teach myself how to drywall. And I have finally drywalled all of the holes in my house from getting my electrical all done. So I don't have holes everywhere. I'm so excited.
Get rid of the mud.
Yeah.
A lot of mud.
Oh, so much mud. And then I have this, I got the aluminum screens to help because some of the holes are a little bit bigger.
Oh, you got the screen like patches?
For some of them. And then the bigger ones, we've got some drywall that we cut.
Here's a trick. It's called a California patch.
Yeah.
Let's say my hole is that big, so I'm going to take my piece of drywall, not this big, and I'm going to cut it. I'm going to cut the size, and I'm holding it, and I'm going to cut it. I'm going to break all of it off except for this. I'm going to put mud around the hole, and I'll put that plug in there, and wipe the thing down.
Yeah.
Looks like you're done right off the bat.
Yeah.
One more.
I did, I did that for the bigger holes, but we had some that were only like that big.
It's a California patch. You take the drywall, you take the back of it, put it next to your hole, and scribe lines. It's that wide, and it's that wide. Now I'm going to peel off all the stuff so that I have a piece of paper with a chunk of drywall on it. I'm going to put mud around the holes, put that little plug in there, and then I'm going to mud that paper flat, let that dry, put one more coat over that, and you can paint it.
It's a legal patch in California.
That's right.
It's going to, it's going to dry as strong as...
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I did that for a couple.
Unless it's over seven inches.
Yeah.
No, it's like the tape and stuff. You just got to kind of plan ahead.
Well, what happens if you do a little small tape, it's a patch, it's that size. You put a piece of this here, and you put a piece of tape here, and you put a piece of tape there.
Yeah, you got to cover it all.
You've got two layers. You've got to fill it that way.
You know, all we see is, right. All we see is, oh, it's this way. As soon as you get done, you have one piece of tape on one end, and if you get that far out, it's going to be breaking the texture.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. But yeah, I have to, I'm excited. I want to do more work on the house. I'm almost done with finishing the floors in our guest bedroom. So like, so we, I took out the carpet in our guest bedroom, found out all the bedrooms are thick oak.
What's a Dunsmere?
Thick oak floors.
Throw them down?
Yeah. I've been drumming on it, and then like, they've been gnarly, so I've got to do another thing. But yeah, no, I'll have a little bit more money soon. So like, I'll actually be able to like do some nice...
It looks like they might be done over there, Mr. Mayor. Got a thumbs up.
Double count?
Wait for Wendy to return.
Oh, no, you're okay.
Yeah, one moment for Wendy to arrive.
Did you bring them back in? Is that what you did?
All right.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
All right. I'll now call the meeting back to order at 7:00 PM.
Okay. So you're ready for the count? So there was, there was...
Yeah.
Yeah. So thanks, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Council. There was 130 votes. We are assuming that they are all valid at this point. And that 130-vote number is insufficient to reach a majority protest.
Thank you so much.
Six hundred.
All right. Well, we have some clarification on the number of parcels.
You'd like to, yeah. So the...
Sure, we can understand.
Sure, sure. So the current approximate number of parcels that we received from our county representatives was approximately 1,981. So taking that in half would be about 990-ish. I think it's 990 and a half. So then we would need 991 votes.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. So we have the election results. Are we supposed to?
You've got to suggest.
So there is, there is a resolution for each sewer and water fund. So if you'd like to pass the resolution out.
Excuse me. I think the city council should first make a finding that there was not a majority protest.
I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, John.
And then you can proceed with your resolutions.
I'll make a motion to find that the, there was an insufficient number of votes to protest the proposed increases.
I'll second that motion.
I don't even want to specify. This is just sewer for right now.
Correct. For the sewer.
Just the sewer. All right. A motion and a secondary discussion of motion. See none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries unanimously?
That was just, that one.
That was just to find that there was...
That was just to find, as Mr. Kenny said, I'd like to make a motion, being that the protests were insufficient. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021 dash, whatever number we got.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. To increase rates for sewer utility services to be effective November 1st, 2021, with annual increases for the next five years.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion of motion?
I guess just a really...
Counselor.
Well, I did not attend the town hall. Could we get an idea as to how many citizens or businesses showed up and...
Zero.
There might have been one.
What if you got Louie?
Might have been one?
There was a person named Tony on there.
Actually, not that it matters. It was a gentleman named Rick, and we had Louie Dewey on there that weighed in.
We went through the whole process, so.
Thank you.
Any further, there are no questions. Only public comment when the time comes. Thank you. No further discussion. I'd just like to thank everyone involved with this. It's never easy to raise rates, but it's very necessary to keep our central services functioning. So let's call a vote.
And to make the state of California happy. We're, we're only doing this because the law says you have to. There's reasons. It ain't like we want to do this.
Well, we've been through this many times in the other meetings, but inflation is definitely real, and it wasn't factored into prior plans. So we're correcting that here. All right. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Art?
No.
Councilwoman Mccaskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Kiesler?
Aye.
Councilmember Deojh?
Aye.
Mayor Bryan?
Aye. All right. Let's move into the second portion of this evening. We have, this is public hearing this evening. We have the water rate study and the water rate increase proposed. I'd like to open this up to public comment, the public hearing. Again, come to the podium or hit the raise your hand button. And if you'd like to submit a ballot, you can submit it to Wendy or city clerk. And again, with public comment, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Roger L. Titus, 4233 Siskiyou Avenue, Dunsmere, California 96025, parcel 059-211-100-0. My first question comes from this document here that states the water fund has healthy cash reserves. And all the council members got a copy of my water question. Up on top, I went to the city office today to ask the, Mr., the finance officer, what, how much this amount of, Mr. Mickelson, I asked him how much was in this fund. He did not give me any amount. And I see him here tonight. Could he please tell the city council and the citizens of Dunsmere how much is in this healthy water cash reserve fund?
We don't do this back and forth. We're there to talk and ask questions. We'll get back to you on that.
Okay. If you would, Mr. Mayor, would you please inquire to Mr. Mickelson how much is in this cash, water cash fund? I think that the citizens should know this. It was not printed here, the amount that's in this healthy cash fund. Second item I'd like to bring up, PACE estimates five percent, it's going to cost for city pay raises, health, whatever. I would like to know, what is the cost to the city for an employee's health insurance? And two, does the employee contribute to its health insurance? The last thing I'd like to put in there, next to bottom line, when will the city collect licenses and occupancy fees and taxes for Airbnb and vacation rentals?
Excuse me, that's very off-topic. It was actually on our last agenda.
It has to, it relates to...
If you look at our last meeting...
Supplementing the city pay, which apparent, looks like it's coming a lot out of the water fees. And I'm suggesting that, along with the water fees that you're going to pay your city employees with, that you...
Thank you, Mr. Titus. I appreciate that. I'm going to briefly respond and say, if you look at the breakdown in our current two-year budget, a lot of the answers are there. But I do appreciate that inquiry. Do you have any further public comment on the water rate increase?
Hi again. My name is Debbie Spagnolo. My address is 4120 Edith Street here in Dunsmere. I've been living here for about 35 years. My house is bought and paid for. I pay my taxes. I'm a good citizen. I do a lot of volunteer work. Now, I have, my question is, why residents are here? You can't answer my question?
We don't do the back and forth.
Yeah, we've explained this before.
So how do you get to answer them? Why are we here if you don't do the back and forth?
Just for procedural, you give your comment for your three minutes. And when we get to our discussion portion, we do typically ask staff or can clarify questions that come up.
Okay, can you clarify that when you have to ask your own questions amongst each other? I was in the 2010 debate about the water thing. I don't understand how, and you probably really need to read this because of the time, offices in 2013, a lot of people didn't understand it. And I haven't read it for a while. I don't understand how you can take a person that's not sitting in here as a yes vote. Dirt doesn't talk. The house doesn't talk. How do you justify that legally to make that a yes answer for a rate increase? That's not right. And if I have to dig further and go to the attorney general's office or whoever I have to go to, I'm going to find out that answer. And in the meeting of 2010, Mr. Harvey said it would be a five dollar, in fact, I was looking through my boxes before I got here. That's why I was late. He said it would be a five-dollar increase for so many years, done. Would you guys do it all the money from then to now? The same thing with the garbage. 2010, guys charged us for five years, $21, so it's 14. If you multiply seven something times 12, times five, times 1,200, my figures came out to $888,000. Where'd that money go? Mr., what's his name, Rubio, whatever his name is, he said that I had my fax straight. Well, it's real easy. One plus one, I believe, still equals two. And as for the water rate increase, I've been here since 1986. The patches in the roads are the same places that they've always been. The only thing I can say that is a positive is that there's more patches in the road, that maybe they're actually doing something this time. So where did the money go? All this time that the increases were approved of by dirt voting a yes, and where's the money? How come things weren't done? Why weren't they taken care of? Why weren't they taken care of like they were supposed to be taken care of, as so stated in the meeting of then until now? And you guys keep referring to the town hall and the US meeting, that we, some of us don't get to all of them, and I think you really do owe us an explanation of what is going on, and in truth, too, in truth, if you don't know, then you don't know.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your public comment this evening.
I appreciate an answer.
All right, is there any further public comment? On the water?
Just reiterate how to do Zoom.
See?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, if you're on Zoom and just joining us, go to the reactions tab now and hit the raise your hand reaction.
Thank you.
Please.
I'm Phil Hitchcock again, sixty-one twenty-five Sacramento Avenue, I had a question quite similar to hers, you came up with a thousand or something numbers? But I haven't heard anybody say that they had letters of agreement that we shouldn't do any, any increases, and yet you claim that we were outnumbered by, you said we had a hundred and sixty, and it was like, no number given for how many yes answers there were, to not give an increase, that doesn't sound right to me. You gotta have two sides of the story here, not just one, not, not just your side and the hundred and sixty people that signed the protest letters, so where'd you get that, that major number from?
Remember, it's not a back and forth.
Okay.
All right, is there any further public comment on the water rate? Anyone on Zoom?
Let's see anybody on Zoom.
All right, I will now close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, all right.
Do you want to go first?
I would, please.
Okay.
If you look online, or if you find any of the documentations anywhere you go to, Proposition two eighteen was designed exactly the way we did it tonight. There's a reason for it, if you want to think about it, but let me explain it. There is an assumption that if you don't vote protest, then you're essentially on the other side. According to Prop two eighteen, we did not make it up, we just watch it and do it, it says that you have to have a majority of the parcels in the city, the number of parcels in the city was just given. And that means that in order for the protest to go through, you have to have fifty-one percent of the number of parcels. Now, again, the city council did not make that up, the state of California did, and moreover, there's a reason for it. If every time we had to come up with how are we going to pay to do the job, we had to have a vote and we had to convince people, we would not be able to have a sustainable water system across our city, because we get grants, we get loans, millions of dollars in grants and loans, and we get them if we're a good city. Just like every citizen out here has to have good credit rating to get a loan, the state and the federal government make sure that we have a good credit rating, and if we don't have a good credit rating, we don't get grants and loans, millions of dollars in grants and loans. Now, the point is, is that the way we become a good citizen is by looking at the loans that we have, and there's something, this is wonky, I know, but there's something called a credit, I just drew a blank. Debt, debit, debit, yeah, debt coverage ratio, DCR. What that means is that for every dollar of loan we have from the state, we have to have one point one times that amount of money coming in, which means that we are locked into a set of calculations that are based upon our loans. Now, what that means is that there will be money coming in on a regular basis, that's why right now in the water system, there's a surplus. It's not because we didn't do anything right or wrong, it's because that money, according to the government, has to keep coming in. And then the projects that spend that money take time to get the grant money, to get the planning, to do all of that. And so what happens is, is that we did a loan from the water fund to the sewer fund, and what that allowed us to do, just like you would do if you're a household, we paid off a really big loan in the sewer fund. What did that do, that meant that instead of us having to have sixty-nine dollars for our starting rate for the sewer, we were able to lower it to fifty-nine, now I'll leave it at that, I know the mayor wants to get on. But what I'm trying to say is, we're following the process set up by the state, we didn't make this up, I don't want to raise the rates, none of us do. That's where I'll leave it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deutch, Councilman Mccaskey.
I do have to say, if you're interested in the projects that are going on right now, we actually have a map in the back of the room for all of our water and wastewater projects that are currently funded right now. In addition to those for the water system, we're working on pressure release valves that help with pressure throughout the city, I work on the environmental documentation for those. And we're also looking forward to Mossbury Springs Improvement, which is where our, basically our headwaters for all of the water that comes here is getting improved through a grant. And then we're also looking for a UV system for basically sterilizing the water to avoid chlorinating the water. So there's a number of different projects that come through, we usually adopt those within a water infrastructure plan on a five to ten year basis, we haven't done that in a while. But just to let you know, there's, there's several different water projects going on, and we usually try to have once a year, or maybe twice a year, talk about all of the comprehensive projects that may go on during the summer. So if you know, if you're in North Dunsmere, there's been some waterline distribution improvements that have gone on through this year, they have now stopped for the season. We've also have a tank above the high school that's being improved, and a number of different water distribution improvements that occurred over the summer.
And I'd like to add to that, if you read the water plan that this is all based off of, you could calculate how much fees we collect, but we have so many grants lined up, we really have, with the help of staff and our consulting firm Pace, lined up over nineteen million dollars of projects to be completed in the next five years. Now, will they all be completed, there might be a couple at the end of that that'll be a year after that, so we've, we've really managed to leverage the fees in water quite well. Do you have, I believe you were looking into the latest census numbers?
Yeah.
Just to answer with some detail, the number of residents in the two.
Yeah, again, so for the Prop two eighteen, it's based off of parcel numbers, and so those parcel numbers, we receive those directly from the county assessor's office, which is considered the tried and true number of parcels within the city limits that are applied to this. Those parcel rolls do come to us on a frequent basis, in terms of the two thousand and twenty count, the, the city incorporated is seventeen hundred and seven people, which is a fifty-seven percent increase from two thousand and ten. And then in our general vicinity, which includes in-city limits and outside, we're at twenty-one eighty-three, which is a whopping eight additional people within the last ten years. That, those numbers were reported in the Mount Chastain News a couple of weeks back, the two thousand and twenty census numbers are considered preliminary at this point, they do go through a number of additional countings to ensure that they did those numbers correctly. So we would probably get the confirmed numbers for the two thousand and twenty census next year. And you can go to the census.gov website, and they always have updates on where they're at with the two thousand and twenty census numbers.
That answered all questions between Bruce and that, as well as questions.
Oh, in terms of the amount that's in the water fund, we are actually working on a quarterly memo for council and the general public, that gives a quarterly update on the status of how much is in all of the different accounts for the city. So the difficulty with enterprise accounts is it, it just depends on the type of, time of month that you're coming in to talk about those enterprise accounts, I don't know if you wanted to give an update on how much is in it, but it changes on. Oh, yeah, Peter's, Peter's got the budget, which we do adopt on a, we adopt a two-year budget, and we adopt that every year.
Every year, and we do put a balance in there for that. Several months ago, council adopted a resolution setting our enterprise reserve funds at an ideal reserve of twenty-five percent of the operating costs and the debt coverage ratios, also play into that as well, so. But this is all, I'd like to just say, both water and sewer, in the current dynamic in Dunsmere, we are correcting eighty to a hundred years of neglect. A lot of these are very, very old pipes that the city, for whatever reason, decided to not update continuously along the way, so we are kind of working through a backlog of very, very old infrastructure. Like everyone to understand that we've made tremendous progress, and we should be completing a lot of that overall updating in the next ten to fifteen years.
Can I add something to this, too? So, you know, again, nobody wants to raise rates, but one of the things that, you know, we learned last time when rates were increased is, we need to bring our water rate up to a level where USDA rural water would even allow us to borrow money because our, our water rates were so low in comparison of the rest of the state, and we need to keep above that so we can continue to chase grants, just a bit of information.
Yeah, and then one final point, a lot with multiple units on it, the study, justification is, is based upon the usage, so fees are proportionate to their usage. So two houses is going to have, in most cases, a proportionate usage of two times, and that, that's the case for all duplexes, et cetera. Now, commercial units have a whole different system that also goes based on their proportionate usage of what that residential usage is considered, so it's all based off of the, the unit of living.
Two separate houses on one parcel is two sewers, two waters?
Not, not always.
I'm just clarifying.
But it's the usage of two waters, two sewers, in terms of the quantity.
It'd be two built.
Not always.
Not necessarily.
That was a question that was asked earlier.
You, you can have a duplex.
You can have a duplex.
Well, you can have, you can have two houses, but they can be on the same meter, it's possible, it exists in Dunsmere, but you're still billed for two houses because you have two houses worth of consumption.
Okay, does that answer your question?
If you have a son of a gun.
Back and forth. Anyway. All right, I'd say we take a recess in order to count the ballots, if anyone has a ballot, there's still time to write one, and you can get it to Wendy if needed.
Hey Blake, the next time we do this, bring your bar, keep your bar in the middle.
Yeah, I'm going to fill up the rest, I drink so much water.
The thing that's confusing is that the way things are filled is not necessarily how you vote for two eighteen, I think that's what you're doing. Okay.
It's getting better, the border was handled so.
I have to go take photos.
But it's, it's going to be a while.
No, it's, I got my bike out in the shop, I paid my test rate.
I'm sorry, shouldn't.
I know, how long were your hundred percent?
I got to actually take photos.
A year, three weeks from now.
Yeah, three weeks from now, I was going to try and push it next week, you know, but I already ripped open, dude, I'm going to hospital after here.
Don't do it.
So.
I got to take photos.
Yeah, that's not, that's not in my wheelhouse.
That's going to get in first, and then they're going to put a pressure relief valve, that's going to be a box in there, and then they're going to put a pipe up here, so there's like, let's see, we're going to let on the pressure, it'll be lit out there.
That's where?
Uh, that's over by, that's the bridge to get over.
Okay. Oh, really? It's right there. But they had a four-foot display, they had it for display, nobody could get it, nobody got it.
Oh, the cast iron one that blew up, yeah.
I asked the sheriff, I brought your flashlight, turn out the lights, I put that flashlight in that piece of pipe, and it lit, this grew up like we were at a discotheque.
Yeah.
A million little holes, you could see them all.
Oh, yeah, the amount of pressure that we get.
The pipe, you put a light, you can see who.
Yeah, the pressure that we get is insane here, it's actually really, really impressive.
That was pretty cool.
Yeah, so finish it. Although it's, it's probably three, four years, but five, I'm sure, they'll remember. Also, I was at the end of the.
It was good what we had to do. They don't know what the rules are, in here, on this side of the nation, when the California says you got to play this, 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 we as a group, we got to tell the people here, we got to do this, they don't.
You know, with COVID money, COVID, and all that kind of stuff. But a while back, I'd been part of a project that was looking at what we could do to get some quality, and put it in here, not just that little crappy thing that we don't even see anybody, but just. But anyway, I want to work.
Four to five, baby.
Jeff here once, and so we're.
Four to five.
And go back to the same, so we've done all the research and everything, it would be a camera that's, you know, tilt.
Did you imagine it?
The terminal, she does all that, and one up here, and then the other thing is, is that it can be controlled by somebody sitting next, I don't think it would be, it wouldn't be, you know, SMC personnel. And they'd be able to, somebody's talking, you're resting up, and all that software exists, and I'd like to use that so that we can really bring, really hear, and it's out there.
They don't want nobody coming in and telling them, you mean I can't have this?
Yeah, Harris is out there, I think it's Elijah. That might be, that might be, I think it's a Harris friend, but I think it depends who's actually running SMC right now, it's Elijah's show.
Stand busy? Are you staying busy, you still working? You're not working? You want to work? I need like two more guys. What? Yeah, I had Cameron working for, Cameron has a tendency to get lost.
Are we just waiting, are we good? Peter?
What?
We're waiting on you, sir.
Five minutes.
The quick five.
Geez.
You're not even wearing a watch.
Sheen. Carry on.
Are we all ready?
Are you?
I'm ready.
You got thumbs up?
All right, call the meeting back to order at seven twenty-nine.
There we go.
All right, you can have five in the room, please. Thank you, all right, meeting's back to order.
So just to, to report then, we had one hundred and forty-seven votes, we consider them all valid. Or assuming that they are all valid, it still is insufficient to satisfy the majority protest.
Could you please reiterate the number that would be needed for a majority protest?
Certainly, yeah, so again, it's about a, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one parcels, half of that is nine hundred and ninety and a half, so you need approximately nine hundred and ninety-one votes, so the one hundred and forty-seven is below that number.
All right, thank you so much, President Director Mickelson, I appreciate it.
So I motion to make a finding that there were an insufficient number of protests to protest the proposed increase in water rates.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Against, motion carries.
Okay, on that note, are we ready for a motion?
Unless there's discussion.
Might as well, I did the first one, I'll take the heat. I, we found, this council found that the protests were insufficient, and in so finding, I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash, I need a number.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, to increase rates for the water utility service to be effective November first, twenty twenty-one, with an annual increase for the next five years.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? I see none, we move into a roll call vote.
Councilmember Art?
No.
Councilwoman Mccaskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Deusch?
As someone that has a lot of old buildings at Dunsmere with a lot of roofs on them, you get what you pay for. So I automatically toss out the low bid because there's no way a licensed contractor with the appropriate insurance, paying the appropriate labor rates, can do much for a library roof for $14,000. I have inherited two buildings with foam roofs. I would never recommend to anybody doing a foam roof because, once it's on, you're unable to chase leaks. And so the next roofer is going to have to remove the foam, the old roof, and that will be a $50,000 job. So, and I'm a little uncomfortable that Councilmember Kaiser seems to be somehow involved with one of the three contractors.
I just know that. I did my research on these contractors.
But all we.
I'm the bad one, just did ice cream.
I guess really, really quick for procedural, we're just at clarifying questions, and then we'll move to public comment and discussion.
All we've got to look at for your low bidder is a one-pager. And as Councilmember Lukasey suggests, they're gonna do the least amount of work on our old leaky roof. And the notion of a 15-year warranty, I think, is far-fetched.
Again, it's just clarifying questions.
Clarifying questions. Are there any clarifying questions of council? All right, if none, I'll open it up to public comment. If anyone would like to comment on the library roof project, please come to the podium or hit raise your hand in the reactions tab. Jim's not coming up. All right, seeing no public comment, I'll now close that, and we can proceed with discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to set everything straight, when I saw these numbers, I did my research before the last meeting, and Councilwoman Lukasey tabled this till tonight, and in that amount of time, I've done more research. The low bidder just did elementary school. The low bidder's been doing, he's done a lot. He's done hospital, done weed, high school, done a lot. What he's trying to do here is introduce himself to the city. He could've charged a lot more, but he's charging a fair price. I'm not making nothing. I'm doing it because I wanna do it for the city. He saw Benson's heater, Benson's roof, because I can't believe that they're charging him that much. So on that note, that's where I know, and I found out about the products. This is a newer product that this guy wants to use, and this is the same old stuff that Benson wants to use.
But what is the product? I'm familiar with the membrane that Benson uses. I'm familiar with foam.
Okay, but this is a product that won't, it's got no UV, it's not gonna burn out this stuff.
But what is it?
It sounds like what we should have is maybe a more extensive staff report on the differences between.
Actually, what we should have is, like Mr. Arth said, this ain't on us. We got people, we hired people to run the city. This should be a city manager thing.
Well, I could say the reason we're doing it now.
We have to expend the.
That's right, we've got the funds. So that is pressing us on us now. We may wanna come back with some other research, but I think the reason we wanna go ahead and the reason we're doing it out of the ordinary is because we just did the other two and just said we're fine with it. So right now, we wanna do it. Everyone here wants to help the library, so.
So I guess, just backing up really quick, just for everybody else, the city of Dunsmere received money from the federal government to do a series of projects throughout the city, so this is being paid for through a grant that we're getting. And this was one of three or one of four items that we appropriated some of those funds to. So that's why we're going through this. The other reason why we would take a look at the bidders is that we, the city, own the library building, is my understanding. Is that correct? Okay. I was correct in that assessment. So it is under the purview of the council to manage their infrastructure, which includes the buildings. So if you don't feel comfortable picking one.
Well, no, there's any number of city buildings, including this one, where we're looking at constant, we're looking at internet improvements, we're looking at air conditioning. So I don't accept the distinction that city-owned. I do think it would be prudent on behalf of the taxpayers to at least get Mr. Smith or somebody up on the roof to see if it's wise, in his expert opinion, to put on a new roof without tearing down the old one and seeing how much, if you've got rotten rafters, if you've got sheathing problems.
Mold.
Putting a new roof on it is a dumb idea.
Yeah, and again, and just to reiterate, we did choose a bid last meeting for the mini split, the air conditioning for this building, so it is on par with how we usually do. But I do agree, I think.
True. She won't find that until you tear it off.
But I do, I do.
You have to be committed.
I do have to agree, I do like to, maybe would like to get additional contractor, no offense, Dave.
No, that's fine, let's find out about the product.
Yeah, I think it's our due diligence if we're gonna do this, that we do a good job.
Would it be all right with council if I invited this gentleman to this meeting to prove that you're actively supporting all the bidders? Bring them all. Samples of their product.
My question for you is, do you want, I mean, you know, it's my recommendation, but it's obviously its council's decision, that the city thoroughly goes through exactly what we're getting for our money, does the research on it, and goes ahead and hires that. And what we're gonna find is, when they get into the work, we're probably gonna find that there's more work to be done, and we need to know what we're getting into after we tear this apart. And we have the money to do it. I mean, if we're gonna fix the library, let's fix it.
Yep.
Yeah, but it goes without saying, if these are like-for-like, we're gonna go with the one that's $20,000 cheaper. Mr. Mayor?
If it is like-for-like.
My recommendation would be that, kind of a compromise, along with Mr. Arth, if we would send this back to the staff to come up with their best recommendation, and then they come back with a recommendation based on all the research, and then we can expend the money that goes along with that choice.
I agree, I'll second that.
I move that.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion?
No, just pretend it's your own roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we're asking staff to, yes?
It sounds like people have some very specific items in mind, questions they'd have to answer, and you might know what those are. One of them is, what are the material properties for each one of the bids, and what are the others specific?
Well, only one of the three bids contemplates a tear-off of the existing roof. The other two do not. Does it need a tear-off to assess the infrastructure and what for this weather zone will give us the biggest bang for these wonderful dollars that we've received? But there's just too much of a variation. Two bids line up pretty closely, and one of them is less than a half.
So I hear, I hear information on the materials used, and then the extent of work, and if, how much structural work is needed as part of this.
Yeah, how much commitment are they willing to do, once they fight any problems?
And framed in the context from last meeting of the lowest bid, we'd be very appreciative if that's for real, but it sounds too good to be true.
It's kinda glaring. And then the bottom line is, is that we're expecting, you know, your recommendation, and that'll probably go the long way towards what we decide to do.
Well, just the research will make it obvious.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
And I'd like to say, you know, again, if we do have any additional questions for Jeff, to email him. I mean, more information is not a bad thing in terms of doing a good job.
Should we email him as city manager from here on out? City manager.
Actually, Jeff, could you share, not obviously now, but could you share with Todd and then to us what your email and cell number is, so we can be communicating with you up until you take over?
Well, it'll be soon, and my worry is that those then will be used, you know, a week after, a week and a half. You know, we can use the city manager.
Okay, that's fine.
See what I'm saying? I don't wanna, and a week and a half, then there'll be multiple numbers, and email addresses out there.
That's.
And so, so all the city manager works, we call the office.
Okay.
Right now.
Starting for the next week and a half.
Just to clarify, right now, we're sharing credentials for my account, so we're getting all the same stuff. When I'm out of here, then our IT folks will, if you wanna keep city manager, you know, they'll set up credentials just for you.
So I think we can handle this outside of this meeting. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to new item, old business. Item B, update on progress, the vacant and distressed building ordinance.
Okay, so let's break this all down. When we originally started this, we had over 30 properties, commercial and residential, that we were looking at. And as we got into this and started exploring a little further and talking to owners, and we had some protests that were valid, it's, the number of structures has been whittled down to 23. We have 11 commercial and 12 residential. And so what we have done is sent out, obviously, the first thing is to send out letters letting people know about this ordinance and the requirement that you need to register with the city, and you need to show forward progress on renting that property, putting it up for sale, or starting your own business. And if nothing happens, those fines continue to accrue, and.
Where do they accrue? I'm sorry? Where do those fines accrue?
They accrue monthly by the city, depending on whether or not you're making progress.
They go to their taxes, is that right?
Yeah, where are they assessed?
So, they're assessed as fines, right. And, but the thing is, so where we're at, to date, we've got 12 folks that have actually registered with the city, 11 not. We've gotten a lot of nonsense responses that, you know, that are addressed to the sentient being in charge, that kind of stuff. So we've got a lot of strange responses, and so the letters have gone out since then to the people that haven't registered, letting them know that if you haven't registered, sticking your head in the sand is not going to help you. The fines will continue to accrue, and you will have a hefty tax bill at the end of the year, and it will continue on and on. Okay? So now, we are in the process of setting up inspections. Unfortunately, it's sitting with our building inspector, who I haven't been able to get ahold of, to find out what has been set up and what has not. The issue has been, and we've been working with John Kenny on this, is do we cite the building owners just on health and safety, or do we go above and beyond? Now, with that said, I wanna, I wanna kind of back up a little bit and talk about the experiences in Weed. I've been talking to their city manager. They're a year ahead of us. Now, all of us wanna walk in and see these properties back up in use and in use as quickly as possible, but we need to follow the process or the entire ordinance falls apart. So we need to follow the chain, and I can share with you, in Weed, we have one commercial building owner we have in common that has issues. And in Weed, one of their structures was found after building inspection to be uninhabitable and actually not repairable, so that was torn down. The other two, the city of Weed took them to court to force that property owner into receivership, and the circuit court judge up here, in his ruling, says that he does not believe in receivership. You need to work at a different route, and your best bet is to find particular building owners until those fines exceed what the worth of that building is. So that's a long game, unless we go through the channels we need to go through, take it to the district court judge, he turns us down, and if we wanna spend the money, that's up to this council, and appeal it, because people are forced into receivership all the time. But that's further down the road, and that's gonna be a call for you guys.
I have a question. Do you know if the city of Weed is approaching the appellate court to overturn the initial judge?
They have not. They have not. And the unfortunate thing is this, that the city manager has been asked to recuse himself, has been required to accuse himself because he now owns a property adjacent to this commercial, you know, person they're trying to chase down. Yes. So we're doing our best. I mean, we, you know, we're gonna see, we're gonna see some wins. The entity with the commercial structure is one of the folks that has registered with the city, and we need to see this through and get through the inspection process, find out what condition these buildings are, and, you know, we need to make the decision of, you know, are we gonna take this to the circuit court? My suggestion, as we do, we follow that lead. sale or starting your own business. And, um, if nothing happens, those fines continue to accrue. And.
Where do they accrue?
I'm sorry?
Where do those fines accrue?
They, they accrue monthly by the city depending on whether or not you're making progress.
They go to their taxes. Is that right?
Yeah. Where are they assessed?
So, um, they're assessed as fines. Right. And, um, but the thing is, so where we're at, um, to date, we've got twelve folks that have actually registered, um, with the city, eleven not. Um, we've gotten a lot of nonsense responses that, um, you know, that are addressed to the sentient being in charge, that kind of stuff. Um, so, uh, we've got a lot of strange responses. And so the letters have gone out since then to the people that haven't registered, letting them know that if you haven't registered, sticking your head in the sand is not going to help you. The fines will continue to accrue and you will have a hefty tax bill at the end of the year and it will continue on and on. Okay? So, um, now, um, we are in the process of setting up inspections. I, unfortunately, it's sitting with our building inspector, who I haven't been able to get ahold of to find out, um, what has been set up and what has not. The, the issue has been, and we've been working with John Kenny on this, is do we, um, cite the building owners just on health and safety or do we go above and beyond? Now, with that said, I want to, I want to kind of back up a little bit and talk about the experiences in Weed. Um, I've been talking to their city manager. They're a year ahead of us. Now, all of us want to walk in and see these properties, um, back up in use and in use as quickly as possible, but we need to follow the process or the entire ordinance falls apart. So we need to follow the, the chain. And, um, I, I can share with you in Weed, we have, uh, one, um, commercial building owner, uh, we have in common, uh, that has issues. And in Weed, one of their structures was found, um, after building inspection to be uninhabitable and actually not repairable. So that was torn down. The other two, uh, the city of Weed took them to court to force, uh, that property owner into receivership. And, uh, the, the, um, circuit court judge up here in his ruling says that he does not believe in receivership. You need to work at a different route and your best bet is to, uh, find particular building owners until those fines exceed what the worth of that building is. So that's a long game unless we, we go through the channels we need to go through, take it to the district court judge, he turns us down and we've, if we want to spend the money, that's, that's up to, um, this council and appeal it. Um, because people are forced into receiver, receivership all the time. But that's, that's further down the road and, um, that's going to be a call for you guys.
I have a question. Um, do you know if the city of Weed is approaching the appellate court to overturn the initial judge?
Um, they have not.
Okay.
They have not. And, um, and the unfortunate thing, uh, is this, that, um, the city manager has been asked to recuse himself, has been required to accuse himself because he now owns a property adjacent to, um, this commercial, uh, you know, person they were trying to chase down. Yes. So we're, we're doing our best. I mean, we, um, you know, we're going to see, we're going to, we're going to see some wins. Um, the, the, the entity with the commercial structure is one of the, the, uh, the folks that has registered with the city. Um, and we need to see this through and get through the inspection process, find out what condition these buildings are. And, um, and, you know, we need to make the decision of, you know, are we going to take this to the circuit court? My suggestion as we do, we follow that lead and then we take it to the next step. That's my suggestion.
I have a quick question. Um, could you remind us what the first tier of fines are? I know it escalates to eventually twenty-five thousand dollars a month.
It's, um.
That's a long way out in the future.
Yeah. The first, um, registration, I believe is five thousand dollars.
Are we keeping a tally of conversations that we have with the vacant and distressed owners in terms of, uh, the reasoning for why it's vacant or like some of the, some of the issues there just because, you know, checking on different grants or different programs available, especially for more of the historic buildings that are in the historic district, um, there might be, you know, we always try to balance the carrot and the stick in terms of these types of programs. So are we keeping track of, you know, some of the issues people are having? And, and is there a way that we can do that in, in trying to help them, you know, fill their building?
We have copious, copious notes for every single address and, um, all the outreach, all the touches and, and that why the decision was made on particular properties that, uh, it was a mistake that we labeled it as a vacant and distressed, um, building and why others have been added to the list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Including, uh, a gentleman who was living in his chicken coop. So.
That's impressive.
With chickens?
We, well, I mean, I guess no. And, but the, but the question is, can he lay eggs? And I don't think so.
All right. Um, any further questions?
Eggs consumption.
All right. Um, I'll open this up briefly for, um, public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. Um, as before, you'll be allowed three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Roger Titus, forty-two, thirty-three Siskiyou Avenue. I'm addressing the vacant or abandoned former house of glass that's up the street from me.
Oh, yeah.
Situation is there are transients living there. There are no sewer facilities. I'm questioning whether the water has been turned on. I guess I'll have to go look at the meter that's out in the public street to see if the city's turned the water on. The swimming pool is allegedly filled with brush and burnables. Now we have a good rain and guess what's going to grow in that swimming pool? Mosquitoes! And they'll be down to your neighborhood. Big Dave as well. They'll be mine first, down your way, and they'll come down here. And mosquitoes, a horrible situation set up. And allegedly, they filled the pool with all its burnables. And now we got a mosquito problem with this wonderful rain we've got. The next thing is, I'm going to ask, does this, does that, people up there have a, any of the building permits from the city? That's my question. I know you won't answer it. I don't know if you have the answers. They have a portable generator up there and a fuel tank. PP&L would not put a pole up there with the situation it is. And I understand that all the electrical wiring has long been stripped by copper thieves and there is no viable wiring in that structure, structure. Vehicles are parked on the property. Apparently the push that owns it recruits people to come down and free help. So we got transients in there. So I'm asking, what is the code enforcement officer doing to enforce your codes, the city of Dunsmere, at the House of Glass? And I don't think, the condition of that building, if you took a look at it, you'd understand that it's going to take a millionaire, millionaire times two or three to get that structure habitable. So that's my input on the House of Glass. I would like to see you pursue that issue with that abandoned, uh, unlivable building that has transients living in it now. No sewer, no electricity.
Right. Thank you so much. Mr. Holt?
Yes. Tim Holt, sixty-two, thirty-five Hill Street. And, uh, I've expressed my support in the past for this ordinance. Um, I'd like to see it, of course, be enforced a little faster. But, um, in the past, uh, Dunsmere, uh, as some of you know, was not proactive in enforcing uh, its, its own municipal building code. And I, I think I've cited in the past example, I believe it's the patio at Potts, that, um, it was a building that was simply allowed to crumble. I mean, it was pretty amazing. They just let the whole building rot basically and, and nothing was done. So at least this ordinance represents a step forward. Um, and, and I hope it will, uh, progress, you know, at a reasonable pace. Um, so a couple of other points briefly, um, it's still not clear to me, and I do have the ordinance at home. Um, so my understanding is that Dunsmere's ordinance does not actually require the property owner of a, a building deemed vacant to put a tenant in there or a business. Um, but they do have to comply with health and safety and, and building codes. Shake his head, yes. So I guess I have that right. My understanding also is that, um, yeah, that it specifically says not just the compliance with health and safety codes, but compliance with the municipal building code. I'm pretty sure that's in there. So, um, so those are, that's another point that, that they have to write. So, yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Um, yes. Any further public comment? Please come to the podium or raise your hand on the reaction tab.
Regarding the, Gil Hitchcock, sixty-one, twenty-five Sacramento Avenue. Regarding the, uh, distressed and abandoned and I remember all the words that were described as, I came to the first two or three meetings of those, the very first meeting, some people gave their side of the story. It took almost a year before anything was done. Place was cleaned up pretty good. And, but now it's almost as bad as it was when the first ordinance went through. And I'm just wondering, are they through with that case or is it still in the limbo, limbo or what?
They're limited notes.
Anyway, I'm, I'm just wondering why it took almost a year for anything to be moved. I live right on the corner from, so I go buy them every day and, uh, it just doesn't seem like anything really happened. For a while, it looked fairly clean. Not anymore.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? And I've seen none. I'll close public comment on this item. If you guys want to reply on it.
Uh, on which piece?
On any of this?
This is just an informational.
Yeah, it's informational.
Well, I mean, on the issue of, um, not seeing anything happen, uh, uh, since the vacant and distressed building ordinance passed, uh, our city attorney, uh, during the heart of COVID said that we should not be enforcing it because, um, part of the requirements of this ordinance is that the property owner needs to be working to, uh, create a viable business, putting it on the market, um, you know, and for a reasonable price as opposed to jacking it up to an impossible price just to kind of wait us out or to start a business on their own. And, um, in the heart of COVID, nobody's starting businesses or nobody's investing. And so our city attorney viewed that as a taking. Other, in other words, we're forcing people in an untenable position to, um, cough up money and continue to pay fines when they have no hope of succeeding. And since we're further along in this process and we seem to be coming out of COVID now, we're enforcing full bore.
And again, if anybody has any issues with a property owner, you can take those to the code enforcement officer at any time. Um, you can also call in and get an, an update on those complaints as well. They'll, they'll be happy to do that.
On the House of Glass, if I can touch on that, um, we have a property owner out there. They're actively demoing the site. They're working with the city right now to change zoning so they can actually get half of the, uh, property up and running as a restaurant. Will they continue to demo and figure out what they're going to do, uh, for the resort portion of it and what they're, they've got planned. Um, they're in our offices, uh, probably once a week and I have a conversation with the owner about that often, if not more.
And, and they, and they got workman's comp on all their employees and all that, you know, they're all legit and all that?
I have no idea.
Well, just was word about the word transients and then if they're working, you know.
Yes.
That puts us in jeopardy.
Yes.
I think you can bring that to our attention, Mr. Titus.
Good. Uh, was information only. Is there further discussion on this?
Well, more a comment and a concern. I, the comment is for the twelve years I've lived in Dunsmere, more has happened in the last two years than happened in the ten years before that because I agree with Mr. Holt. The city did have the ability to do much more under the historic district ordinance that protects buildings in the historic district and our basic nuisance ordinances, but the city didn't have the staff. The city was afraid of getting sued. The economy was terrible. So I, I'm glad we're working with the city of Weed and I'm very pleased with the report from the departing city manager. For the new city manager, my concern is the issue of if you are going to fix your building, if you take the option of, I'm, okay, I'm going to fix it up, are you going to come and get the appropriate permits and are you going to follow the building codes? Or are you going to use gypsies and put in unsafe wiring, unsafe plumbing, unsafe heating, uh, close it all up and say, okay, I'm done. Very hard to fix that after it's closed up. So I, I hope in these conversations, if our goal is to assure public health and safety, that building owners, and some of these costs will be substantial, uh, that they do it right.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further discussion?
And we'll have to say, I haven't heard the word gypsies in a long time, but ironically, it does kind of fit the situation, doesn't it?
You know, not to be flippant, but, um, let's call them methy gypsies. Um, that, you know, and one thing I didn't mention about Weed is that, um, since the, you know, the district court judge, um, you know, uh, doesn't believe in forcing properties into receivership, I will say that in my last conversation, uh, they have racked up fines against this individual of about eighty thousand dollars and they continue to rack up.
Well, and, and to my point, because now we have no bank. So you have to go up to Weed to get cash from US Bank and you see a bright red stop work order on one of the buildings issued by the city of Weed.
Yeah.
As you whistled into the bank.
All right. Uh, let's move into item eleven, uh, new business. Uh, we have, um, staff report from John Kenny originally. I believe the overview of the state law regarding the relaxation of the Brown Act laws to continue the ability to hold hybrid meetings.
So, um, under COVID, uh, we had the ability, we had the relaxation of the Brown Act that allowed us to hold hybrid meetings. That, um, that expired on October first.
Could you explain to us to people what it means in terms of Brown Act?
Yes. Well, um, the, the Brown Act, um, you know, typically we have to have every member of city council here in person and we don't have, um, we don't have a way to teleconference in. Everybody's got to come up. They've got to be present. But since we're in the middle of a pandemic, some people don't feel comfortable being in the same room. Uh, and so the governor allowed the relaxation of the Brown Act where, uh, you know, um, at first there was a majority of folks joining us by teleconference, um, in these meetings. And, um, you know, that, uh, that original emergency proclamation ended, um, in October. And what he's done is now extended the ability, uh, to hold these hybrid meetings. And this is based on, um, I'll, I'll read this verbatim. Uh, we can continue to, um, hold these hybrid meetings if local officials have recommended or imposed measures, uh, um, you know, related to social distancing, um, still related to the pandemic. And so, uh, you know, it's, it really, you know, it, it's the decision of this body whether they can, they want to go back to fully in-person meetings, but given our case numbers, including those that have been vaccinated that are coming up positive, you know, you know, for my, my two sense is that we offer the flexibility for those folks that don't feel comfortable showing up in person.
Just for clarification, we would have to adopt the relaxed regulations to allow our subcommittees and standing committees to do that as well.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, Dom. If there's no further clarification, I'd like to open this up for public comments. If anyone would like to make public comment on this item, either raise your hand in the reactions tab or come to the podium.
Can you explain that again about the Brown Act? I thought the Brown Act was everybody was supposed to vote or something. I don't know. It's been a long time since I've read it. So what is the Brown Act? And so all of you guys are supposed to be at the meeting at all times because of the virus. You didn't do it on TV or whatever. And that's what we're going to vote on, yes or no?
We'll respond in a minute, but, um, finish your public comment, please.
So, I'm getting, I just, just need to clarify the Brown Act again. That was a little different. But it's been a while since I read it. So that's all.
Understandable. All right. Thank you so much. If there's any further public comment?
Roger Titus, forty-two, thirty-three Siskiyou Avenue, Dunsmere, nine-six-zero-two-five. I would ask that if you hold these hybrid Brown Acts, that you make them, have them transparent and open to all of your constituents.
Dwight Bailey, five-nine-zero-six Castle Avenue. When we first started going to the hybrid meetings, I came before this council and I told you that I am a follower of the Brown Act and that is something that allows me to keep governments in check. And anytime there's a violation of that act, it's a very serious thing, no matter how minor it is. Since that time, I'd like to congratulate this body and the rest of the bodies in, in Dunsmere of actually maintaining the Brown Act to its full extent. An example was that outside of this room, council members have to limit how many of you go. You just can't all jump in the same car and go up to see a building. Two of you got to go, two of you go and another one didn't. That happened again the other night. We planted a tree. You realize there was no Brown Act violations and yet most of this council was here except one member that was out of town. So we have conducted that very well so far. I'm more happy with it now than I was. But again, when the municipalities spend money, I think you do need to be in this room. I explained that before. It's allowed, it says when you tell, you spend a lot of money, you need four fifths vote usually they would say, but there's no four fifths vote. It's two thirds vote, the most financial matters. But boards have a choice to how many members they have. Most of us have a five-member board, not a seven member. So you can't split another member. So that's very important in the hybrid meeting. If you need an important vote, you can call somebody, make a call. But the fact is if two or more members are not here, there is somewhat of a choice who you call first. Those, I think that those things that you've handled very well. I think there's been no violations of the Brown Act so far, but as far as continuing them, I think for the near future, we might have to continue them. It might be the decision to continue them. But the fact is government is ran by the people who show up.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Are there any additional, real quick, are there any additional public comments? Seeing any up on the Zoom screen. All right. Um, I'd just like to address a couple of those. So the Brown Act is, um, uh, the legislation, uh, going back many decades, uh, that regulates a local government, local government, uh, many other boards. So it's just, um, a lot of rules governing the decision-making. Um, if you want to research it, there's a lot of literature on it. So Brown Act, it's, it's the, uh, governing protocols, essentially what we have. It's the governing protocols, essentially what we have to conform to for the state here at city council.
I just, damn, I just want to say, Mr. Bailey, it has been a long time since anybody said thank you to this council or said we're doing a good job. You have no idea how much, I'm speaking for everybody right now. I know, we feel the same. That's appreciated. Thank you, sir. We do kind of work hard on the Brown Act. It's a process. You've got to learn it. And, and, and if you don't, you, you can get all kinds of trouble. So I just, I want to thank you, sir, for getting up there and thanking us. It's been a long time since I've heard that.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Basically, what we're talking about in this particular instance is, is that in a normal situation, you either, a council member either has to be here in presence, or there's an alternative, which is that if a person is on a travel, they were going to say, here's where I'm going to be. And I've done it in a room in a hotel in South Lake Tahoe. I attended one of these meetings, but the thing is, you have to actually put it into the agenda ahead of time. So that's an odorous process for unusual situations. My thoughts on this, and then I'll leave it up, is that we should continue the flexibility. But I think we've all demonstrated that we're going to be here nonetheless. But I think just for overall sake of, we don't know what's coming, I would recommend we maintain the capability while I think we'll all be here.
Well, and I've talked to a couple of our standing committees as well, and they feel a little bit more comfortable still meeting, still meeting via Zoom and people have various reasons for why they want to do that, health-related or whatever. And I think at least at this time, I would agree that it does need to remain flexible for people who may not feel comfortable. You know, again, I am, I'm admitting I'm back vaccinated.
It's the best way for us to keep.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think it has a benefit far beyond the expediency during a pandemic. And I think the state will probably reconsider how it is permanently within the time period here.
Well, again, I think it's important not to confuse that Zoom and all of that as it represents a way for us to communicate from the idea that we as bodies have to be here. So I would hope that going forward, we continue to do Zoom now that we've learned about it because it does provide an opportunity for the public to participate.
And a perfect example is someone could be here in Dunsmere, but say they just came down with a cold. It's nice to have them participate.
I have a question. Could you request from John Kenny if we can just make this a consent agenda item for future meetings?
Well, we can approve it right now.
No, we, so we have to approve this every 30 days. Excuse me, if you want to have a conversation, could you please take it outside?
Excuse me, we could not have coffee in the chambers.
So we have to do this every 30 days per the new law. So what I was just requesting is if we could have clarification, since we were talking about it now and we're open to continuing this, that it'd be a consent agenda item.
I'll call John tomorrow.
So we're, yeah.
Yeah.
Good call.
Do you have any discussion or I'm happy to make a motion if you're.
I, I'm ready to say the state of emergency is over. If the trusty newspaper has it right, 42% of people living in Siskiyou County are fully vaccinated as of October 9th. That's a very low number. Compared to the top five counties in California, they're all up in the 70s. And they have all, by and large, ditched the Zoom meetings. Because to answer Debbie's question, the Brown Act is the bedrock that says the people do not turn over to government their rights to participate. And not everybody in Dunsmere has the ability to participate by Zoom for any number of reasons. All of us are here. Some of us are masked, some of us are not. But if we're here, I think it is far, far better to have us in direct interaction with the citizens we're supposed to represent. Who's going to draft up this resolution that says the city of Dunsmere is in a state of emergency? And then renew it every 30 days? I'm, I'm ready to. It looks like the legislature said, and the governor said, we're not bending that much. The Brown Act still is the Brown Act. So I understand technology is changing our world, but for a community this small, I don't think we need Zoom anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art.
So I'm, I'm willing to make a motion, I make a motion to make the finding that for the health, safety and welfare of the people that the city of Dunsmere continue for 30 days to offer hybrid meetings and relax the Brown Act requirements per Assembly Bill 361.
And won't you add on to that, ma'am, about the consent agenda?
Oh, I don't think that needs to be enacted.
Well, procedural question. The memo seems to say we need a proclaimed state of emergency.
I can, I can amend my motion to make the finding that we are in a declared state of emergency referring to COVID for the health safety.
I was interpreting that as the state declaring a state of emergency.
It says either one. State or local officials.
So it says at the bottom in, underline, if a public agency wishes to continue the use of teleconferencing, it must make a finding every 30 days that supports its continued use.
And that goes back to the proclaimed state of emergency.
Yeah. So I tried to do the over-encouraging health, safety, welfare of the people.
Sounds good to me. I'll second her motion.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion of the motion at hand?
I would just like to say, I understand your sentiment. I just, I'm just, just talking to some of our committee members who would be subject to having to go back into person. Not everybody is comfortable coming back quite yet. One of the arguments that I've had is from some of our DPAC members who would feel much more comfortable having a higher vaccination rate in the county and then being able to go back in person.
If you look at the rest of California with the notion, commercial nonprofit, the techniques are if you're nervous, sit six feet away. If you're nervous, wear a mask and for God's sakes, get vaccinated.
Unfortunately, we have a really tiny room. We don't have a large.
Well, and that's.
I agree with the sentiment. I'm, I really like being in person. It comes down to, I think it's more effective. It's easier to communicate with our constituents, with each other. But I have found it to be beneficial when pretty much one at a time, for various reasons, the one meeting, one will miss a year or two meetings, one will miss a year, one is able to continue participation. So I'd be in favor of something where like the quorum had to be in person, but we'd allow for.
But you're mixing up a member of the deliberative body. That is, Councilmember Deutsch pointed out, you can do that. There's a provision for appearing remotely versus the people.
Well, I think hybrid is the key to why I, if we were deciding between Zoom and in-person, I would completely support the in-person at this stage. But I think the hybrid model allows for greater participation.
When Bruce, when Bruce.
As long as we have both.
When Bruce Skyped in, that was way before COVID. Had nothing to do with COVID. He was Skyped in. I remember one time way back when, when, when artist, I mean, Mr. Steele.
When they didn't let it.
Exactly. Somebody be there with a gun. You remember that? Oh, my God.
Call the question.
All right, yes.
Motion's been made.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Art.
As best I understand the motion, no.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Mayor Bryan.
Aye.
All right, so let's move into item new business B, discussion on formation of ad hoc committee to find permanent city manager.
Pretty straightforward. So for the last city manager search committee, Councilmember Deutsch and myself served on an ad hoc committee just to arrange the process and do some of the recommendations to the greater body as a whole. So just for the edification of the public. The ad hoc committee doesn't choose any particular candidate over the other. They just, you know, work through the process. I think in this circumstance, I think we'd be looking at recommendations of, you know, whether we want to go with a corporate firm that would help us with the search and screen. Or if we would recommend doing it in-house. The full council will be able to talk about that as a public item before any of those decisions get made. But it's basically just a working group of two council members preparing those reports. The city manager is an employee of the city council. So that's why they become much more involved in the city manager search and screen as opposed to any other employee. So that's basically what we're talking about is if we want one, if we would like to do another search and screen ad hoc or assign that task to staff, or if we would like to do an ad hoc, who would like to be appointed to that.
And to be clear, this is not necessarily a broader discussion of, even if we do go with an ad hoc, the discussion of what route we should take will be a council-involved decision.
Yeah, that'll be at a future meeting.
This is not the one.
Juliana, could you address the obvious fact that we have an interim city manager at the moment and the whole situation with that?
We have an interim city manager who could be eligible for the permanent position. Typically with staffs, you don't assign staff who may be interested in that position to be in charge of the search and screen committee. It's usually not kosher. So that being said, again, we could assign it to a different staff member, but that staff member reports to Jeff. So it's still kind of a little bit of an awkward situation. But I just did want to line up that those are the two typical options taken by cities. If we did have a circumstance where the individual who was serving as interim or acting was not interested in the position, then we could assign it to staff. That's not usually recommended in this circumstance. But again, it's up to the full council how we would like to proceed.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'd also like to then, at that point, even though I've been involved in the last couple of them, I would recommend just personally that I not be involved with this one, just so I could work a little bit with Jeff and not feel like I'm conflicted in how I'm looking forward. So I'd like to recuse myself from this go around.
Okay. That, that's just fine. I am in favor of this ad hoc, whatever the makeup is. Because I think it's high time for one or two council members to have the authority to begin making calls, doing research. And I'd be, be willing to serve on it. I do have the time and the interest right now to put towards that. But I'm open to other options. I just think we need to go through a stage of research, come back to council and decide what route we're taking and begin the process.
Do you want to open up for a public comment and then we can move to further discussion?
That's right. Yeah, let's open up this to public comment.
Do we really need a city manager? I mean, years and years ago, I mean, you guys all. It's not, it's funny, but it's often, years ago, it's all up to the committee members to make decisions, do this, that and whatever. We have the treasurer, a person who does the money and the clerks, whatever. Why do we really need a city manager? And I don't know what the salary is, but it seems like last 10 years, we've gone through, what, three of them? That, and what do they stay, six months, take their severance, pay them off? Isn't that an expense to the city? I think if you are going to stay with the city manager, you better make sure that they have to stay a minimum of five years. Let them earn their keep. I mean, come on. I think it's, the way that I know of, I mean, starting with Mr. Harvey and a couple of the guys before him, boom, 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 they're gone. So really think about if you really need one, because you guys all have to decide amongst yourselves anyways. So look at how much money you'd save the city and how much aggravation it's, you have to go to these other committees to go look for another city manager. Definitely have some definite length of stay. I think Dunsmere suffered enough, but no salary for not earning.
Yeah, if there's any additional public comment, you can either come to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. I'll see none. I'll now close the public comment on this item and open it up to discussion.
I guess just really quick to address the public comment, yeah, you do need a city manager nowadays with the state mandates that we have to comply with, you know, again, with the discussions that we've had today with our infrastructure, manage grants, manage the employees. It is very typical to have a city administrator, city manager, even small, tiny places, Fort Jones, Aetna, Montague have also. It's not, it's not, so again, I don't want to get into back and forth, but I'm just trying to do some education. It's not a law, but every municipality that manages multimillion-dollar budgets has someone in charge, basically running, I mean, for lack of a better term, running the business. To do, or businesses. There are other city formats where the mayor is elected for a four-year term and basically takes the city administrator, city council position, but we are not that type of city. We would have to do a complete overhaul through an election process to do that, which we're not discussing today. But, and it is very typical nowadays for a city manager to stay for only three years. That's pretty typical for that position. So going back to the discussion at hand, I sat on the ad hoc with Councilmember Deutsch before. I don't mind sitting on it again, just to help with the research on the backend.
I think Matthew would be a good person to be the second.
There have been nine city managers, just to be exact, since our, counting Harvey, and I've been here nine. But we have a couple of them come back. But we've been nine. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point something out. There has not been one hand raised on this thing all night. I think you might want to take a look at that and make sure that it's not broke or something. I mean, there not one response out of all this stuff tonight. Something says maybe.
It's working, Dave.
Okay. It's just very funny with everything and all this.
We will, of course, continue to monitor that, but I think part of that might be that we actually have a large in-person turnout.
I'd just like to listen.
Do you have any comments on the ad hoc committee that we're discussing?
So you want to dance with me? I'll do it.
I think the proposal was Juliana and myself.
I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. Physical therapies and another operation coming, I'm good. You guys, besides you guys.
Most Councilmen would like to serve.
Well, no, I am, as I previously announced, I'm in almost the last year of my term. And that might make me a good candidate because I will have no dog in the fight as we go forward. I've done a number of executive searches. The, the one thing I want to see out of the process is that we no longer treat the position of city manager as a position nobody wants. I think as we move into the next several years, being city manager of Dunsmere will be a highly desirable position. But that's going to require advertising and looking. We did that when I was mayor in 2010. And we did an executive search firm. And it's typically a percentage of the salary of the position you're trying to fill. And we had, I think, 60 applications. And we winnowed them down to a set of finalists. We gave them a few little tests. And we ended up with Jim Lindley, who was a former county manager for the county of San Bernardino. He's a former mayor of San Bernardino. He knew municipal financing. He knew everything. But then those that came behind me decided he was too expensive. And just like the roof, you get what you pay for. So we went through the succession of typically city managers that weren't experienced enough, were at the end of their career. And I don't think it advantages us to do that again. So I hope we have a vigorous search that we point out, built on the work of our last city manager, a much clearer picture of what the job involves. And we hire somebody that's full of pride and wants to do the job. But I don't have to be on the committee as long as the committee doesn't go and leave the other three behind making decisions.
Yeah, and just to clarify, our last search is we did it in-house because we were, it was just post 2018 with the Delta fire. So we did not have the revenues that we have now.
You know, what's funny is your last search, the two gentlemen are sitting.
These are our two finalists. Yeah, that was interesting. I, I think, I think for the situation that we had a couple of years ago, we did the best job that we could. I think we did get about 20 to 30 applications. But again, I think we're in a much better spot this time to actually have the revenues to be able to hire someone to do it. It is a lot of work to do it yourself. I would, yeah, anyway. But yeah, I, I mean, I'd be happy if, if Councilmember Deutsch doesn't want to stay on, I'd be happy for continuity's sake with the last search. I thought our last search went fairly well.
I move we form an ad hoc committee with Councilwoman Lucchese and Mayor Bryan.
I second that and thank them for their diligence.
And we'll make sure that they have a nice, really robust.
And again, I would like.
And again, I would like to be clear, it's an awkward situation. I would be just as happy if it turns out down the line to be Jeff, but we just have to do this as, as prudence and due diligence, so.
Fair and equitable.
You got your work cut out for you. And Todd, you, you, you heard what Peter said, that down the road, people are going to want to be the city manager.
People want to be a no.
All right.
We're cute.
We're cute. You're cute. We're, we're not cute.
All right, but you need to vote on it?
Was there a second?
Yes, Dave did.
Yeah, I seconded it.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And before we get to item 12, future agenda items, I'd like to thank our outgoing city manager, Todd Uhas, for tremendous efforts in moving Dunsmere's well, this council's policy objectives forward. And I'd like, if you want to say a few words of farewell, we've deeply appreciated your commitment to this town.
Well, I guess here's, you know, a few things. The staff here has been top-notch. You know, I, you know, I'm, I'm leaving here not fully sure that this is the right move. I put all my heart into this, this job and, and you know, worked as hard as I can to get us on the right track, and I think we are on that right track. A lot of it is, is up to, you know, has been just the evolution of our council and how we've been able to work together to just move our community into a place where we can win. We have an opportunity now with a planning grant out there to actually look at our community and say, all right, here's, here's where we're failing in attracting new businesses and potentially bringing in new businesses after the fact. So we have a de facto economic development department that will help us thrive in the future. I'm right up the road, I'm not dead, I'll take calls, I'll come down here for meetings. You know, I care about this community and I want to see it succeed. The, the time that I've had with Jeff, he is a smart, talented man. And I think the ability to have three weeks together for us to, you know, I've got everything laid out, every single project, numbers, who to call. But then for Jeff to be able to sit in on some of the meetings and, and figure out how, how best to, for lack of a better word, working P for some of the other groups that can be somewhat difficult, I think has been invaluable. I got a list when I came on, and I think Jeff's going to do just fine. Thanks.
Thank you so much, city manager.
Dave, did you want to say something? I figured you missed your opportunity.
Well, yeah, I didn't know that this was your last meeting where I would have had a key.
It's not his last meeting. He'll be back down. You heard him, he's just up the road.
Okay, well, as far as.
Unless the vortex.
Dude, you came here, you hit the ground. From day one, you hit the ground running, and you showed this council, this city, nothing but respect, and you did a good job. I'm going to miss you, before you go. I needed this.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have something for future agenda items.
Yes.
There was a question asked in City Hall yesterday, and I was appalled by the answer. The question was, if a motion picture came to town and said, hey, we want to film at the airport for a day, and we'll pay you this much money, can we do it? The answer was no. It's not FAA. My question, and then, and then it was brought to, well, it's up to council to change it. I want to change that. The, if the airport is behind all this money, and if somebody wants to come up and present a viable, viable situation to where we can make a few bucks on that, I don't see where it's infringing on anything other than trying to make a few bucks on that. It's promoting business, it's promoting the airport, and it's a revenue for the city. Why, why couldn't we rent that?
So I know that we have a special event piece coming up to council in the future, and maybe that's something that we could add to the staff report to clarify.
It's on the list of.
This is your fault, dude. He asked the question. And it is curious, and it is great.
So it's not even a, well, this is what I will say, unfortunately, Big Dave. I think that during this time of transition, the staggering amount of projects we have going right now, probably wouldn't be wise to revisit this as a matter of form right now. If someone were here asking that question, I realize that might be too late, but I'm not sure now is the best time.
So that we don't, I don't want to get into discussion for tonight, because we've already had a long meeting, but I do know that we are bringing an item back related to special events and movies, and maybe we can just have a little bit of a paragraph clarifying.
It's on the very extensive list to come up with a special events permit. You know, I don't know what the question that was asked, I mean, if it's about renting the runway out, it all comes down to what does the FAA say? If it's the property that's adjacent to the airport itself, I don't see a problem with that. We just need to call, if it's about the runway, we need to find out what the FAA rules are.
So yeah, not to get into discussion for tonight.
I'm just trying to get opportunities for that airport and make more money for it.
It's a very good point.
So two potential new agenda items that I was going to bring to the council for the next one. One, this could be part of the discussion, it's the events, the film. So I think we can start with a conversation about these types of issues, you know, that will follow up in the events, the film plan. And the other, Jen, I'm like, Jen, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, to consider a discussion of city properties and the opportunity to turn those to public parks and public access.
I like that.
I'd like to, if my time here is going to be as an interim, three or four months is a good sort of, you know, who we do that, I'd like to buy off of those couple things in addition to everything that you all have on.
Okay.
I think those are two things that I can make tag later and along with all the other stuff.
I like that.
May I request part of the item having a spreadsheet of all of the properties that we own and their zoning, just so that we have a good list for our own edification?
This is really regarding free properties, but I think.
I think it'd be nice to know.
Don't have any opportunity.
We have that.
I think it would be nice to have a list.
It would be nice to revisit that.
Yeah, but thank you.
Okay, and then there's a great number of things that will be needed to come back in the next couple of meetings. We probably will have a continuous item on, update from the ad hoc committee.
On search and screen.
On search and screen. So anticipate that coming back. I believe Councilwoman Art is the next person in line for pre-agenda meeting.
That's fine. My hope is, yes, there was COVID, yes, there's a changing of the guard. When are we ever going to get back to the vision and planning exercise? The best way we can connect with the citizens of this community is to do this survey that we got half-done and quit on. But there are a number of issues where we sit up here and make decisions with very little feedback, whether it's there or there. And I think it would be helpful to all of us, like a good doctor, to occasionally ask the patient, how you doing? Water, sewer, moss spray, parks, what do you want to see? And it just is so hard to do budgeting if you don't know what your priorities are. What projects are moving, what aren't, what's high priority, what isn't, and, and we just can't seem to do it.
Well, you know, in the absence of people showing up to this meeting, council members I know do interact with the public. It's been difficult throughout this time of COVID. But as you know, Councilman Art, divisioning, as far as a more robust version, is tied to that planning grant for economic development.
Well, that seems like a cop-out to me, but we'll talk about it in agenda review.
Okay.
I make a motion that be adjourned, there's nothing else.
Second.
Third.
Third.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Thank you.